We call this meeting of the Nelson County Board of Education on June 10th, 2025 at 5:30. Please join our board team as we recite the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the Nelson County schools, we unite students with people, place, and purpose to thrive and work in life. Our meeting goals for this evening, update policy and procedures for the 2526 based on local priority and state law. Evaluate the DFP hearing officers' report and district facility plans' next step. And we don't have any special group coming in front of us. The tour was made, so I'm going to talk about that just briefly. As everyone knows, the ATC, the soon-to-be Up Center, is under construction and the board took the opportunity to walk through while it's under construction today, and the space is really kind of coming into its own. You can kind of visualize it, and of course, I think there's some brochures that Ms. Berryman has set up. If you guys want to take a look at those, it just kind of gives you a layout of what the land looks like currently. It's really exciting. It's great to hear that we're going to be working with community partners and have just this expansive space that's going to really open up Nelson County, not just Nelson County schools, but Nelson County for innovation and student success, and it'll be good stuff. So yes, you all missed that if you didn't get to go, but Ms. Berryman, it sounds like she's opening up for a little bit of time afterwards. So moving on, guest policy, our guest comments. Thank you for attending our Nelson County Board of Meeting. Any person wishing to address the board may do so by following these rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes. Please step forward, state your name and address, and if you represent a group, state the name of the group you are representing. So we have one guest speaker tonight, Ms. Deborah Bohachewski.
Is it on?
Hello? Yep, I guess so. You ready? Deborah Bohachewski, Bloomfield, Kentucky. First off, off script, I just wanted to say, if you're a praying person, please pray for Bill Osborne. He is in a very serious hospital situation, and as much as he wanted to be here tonight, he's in the hospital and is going to have life-saving surgery in the morning. So if you are a praying person, please set your differences aside and consider praying for him as he has done a lot for the district over the years. I just wanted to put that out there. Just to kind of recap of last night, I didn't re-watch it, but I was here, and something is really concerning to me, and that's that of the names I was familiar with, over 80% of those people were either staff members, family members of staff members, contributors to campaigns, and I'm not talking $50 or $100, I'm talking over $1,000 campaigns to school board. And that leaves six names I wasn't familiar with, so I don't know if they have ties with the district as far as employees. But man, that is concerning, guys. So we had almost no, other than staff, community input. So just think of those things when looking forward. And another thing that really concerns me is I know that the facility plan has some flexibility, and you guys can recall the LPC. And don't get this wrong, I love that we are adding CTE facilities, but do you realize we will for sure have five CTE facilities that will have collabs along with all of the work-based learning? I mean, who is going to fill these buildings? So please, just consider things carefully. While funding looks good, we know that can always change. The economy could tank. Bardstown, their last board meeting, they are struggling. There's probably impending lawsuit. One of the distilleries decided they wanted to protest the barrel tax. You know, there's a few more years, I think nine more years before that's phased out. Things can happen, so please move forward carefully. Consider the population. People are having less children. Nelson County does not have a whole lot of room for growth. Just lots of moving parts, so please consider things carefully. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So moving on to the consent agenda, everyone was given this in advance with any information. Was there any discussion for the board?
Something that I would like to ask about is the fees that we are approving on those. Does our district have opportunities for waivers or for families to apply for scholarships? Because several of these are their fees for participation in cheer, band, volleyball, et cetera.
Mr. Martin, do you have anything to add there? I don't.
I think in general, if a family expresses need, like we all just try to work with them, use a common sense approach. Obviously, we have a pretty reduced lunch status. We kind of use as a guideline as basis to determine who might make who doesn't, per se. But I think it's really a local conversation I have with friends and students.
Okay, and so I just, I think it's important to note if parents, we do not want barriers to participation. I know no one in our district wants that, and so parents should, would be encouraged to approach the school if they. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's, how do we communicate that in a responsible way? Something we need to think through.
Any additional discussion? All right, if not, we will need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
One second.
All right, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks, guys. Motion passes. Next is our annual memorandums of agreement, Ms. Speaker and Ms. Holderman.
Hello?
Hello.
This is our opportunity really to share out with you all, as we do usually every June, just to talk about the memorandums of agreement, our partners that we use to support our students. So this is the list of partners that we have at this point. These, most of these are all partners that we've used in the 2425 school year. I will bring your attention to a couple that I'm excited about, and that is Lemonade Mental Health Therapy Services. That is a local mental health agency that's right here from Bardstown. They are really excited about partnering with us and supporting our students. So we are always looking for great partners, and we get really excited about local partners. So that is a new one. And then in the second column, already autism. That is not a new partner, but they used to be called Commonwealth ABA. They do have a new name, they have some new structure, but they are also expanding services. Lastly, I'll just draw your attention to all of the universities that are in the list. It's pretty exciting that we have so many universities that want to partner with us for a clinical site. So I may have said this to you all before, but a lot of universities will not partner with public schools for a clinical site or rotation, and they are overwhelmingly in favor of partnering with Nelson County schools. And that is a win-win for us because we get practical students, intern students, who are supporting our Nelson County students, but they're also learning from Thrive Center providers as they go along. So it's pretty exciting. The others, I think you're all familiar with. They are partners we had last school year, and I'll turn this over to Madeline, and she can talk about hers.
I think it's wonderful that we have Stacy Holderman in the Nelson County schools. You know, normally, these would all be things that Madeline and Diverse Learning was taking care of, but Stacy and her department and her work has been hugely impactful in our schools, and just wanted to take a second to celebrate Stacy and the wonderful things she's doing. We see things like healing neurons and already autism. Not only are these community partners helping our neurotypical students, but also our non-neurotypical students. So we are seeing wonderful gains in our student impact as well as with families to really support their students. So tonight, we're just asking for your approval of our annual MOAs.
Ms. Holderman, I want to commend you for the tremendous partnerships because in reality, even if we have therapists in our districts who are employed by the district, there are never enough with the caseloads compared to the need of our students. And so I appreciate that you have reached out, and it does speak to the quality of our services and programs that these universities trust that they can place their students with our clinicians and provide services. Thank you.
I heard you speak about the autism. Is that the Autism Center of Louisville?
No, it's actually, I'll take this just in case I need to...
We're really lucky to have that. We're one of the few sites in the United States that has an autism center.
Yes, I mean, this is really, this is really great, and Commonwealth, I'll refer to them as their old name for just a moment. Commonwealth ABA is not very old here in Bardstown. They were a new autism center that was located right here. Their owner was from out of state, and when I first connected with him, I was really excited that they were going to serve students, families here in Nelson County. They have gone through some structural changes, which happens sometimes when you're brand, you know, you're brand new coming in, and they have new ownership, new structure, but a lot of the same people still work there. They do autism screening for a lot of our families here in Nelson County. They also provide us with board-certified behavior analysts for those who qualify and registered behavior technicians. So we are really feeling the advantages of serving this population with their commitment.
Thank you for getting us hooked up on that.
You also talked about the Autism Training Center, so we are partnered with them as well. They're with the University of Louisville. We, the Early Learning Center, was also a site initiative for training for autism this past year, and we continue to see those services kind of overlap into making sure our professionals have the capacity to build for supporting students with different needs. So that is an ongoing partnership as well.
Thank you all for your hard work on that. That's something that's near and dear to me. I see a lot of children. It's not going away, so we have to get a hold of it and bring it in. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So we're just asking for your all's approval of our MOAs.
All right, any further discussion? All right, we will need a motion to approve the annual MOA update as presented.
I'll make a motion.
All right, thank you. I need a second.
I'll s...
I'll second.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, ladies. All right, moving on, our annual policy and procedure update. Ms. Kristen Provis gets to read this.
Everyone's favorite part. Before we get into the not-so-very-fun things, I do want to just bring your attention to two big policies that we've been working on, and you guys should be familiar with. We've revisited these a few times over the past several months. It's our bereavement leave policy and our parental leave policy. So we just want to thank the board and the members of the benefits team that have worked together to help push these policies forward so that we can provide better care for our staff. For the bereavement leave, just three key takeaways for today is that you get up to two days provided annually. These days will not roll over from year to year, and they should be taken within seven days of the loss of a loved one. And then on the next slide, for the paid parental leave, three key takeaways is families get up to six weeks of paid leave for birth or adoption of a child. Both parents are eligible, and sick days can be used to extend this leave. So any questions about that before we move on?
No, but I think it's a great addition to our policies.
Okay.
And I just want to celebrate the board for the advocacy of this work. Since January, you guys have been talking about how we can continue to level up in the way we take care of team members across the district in whatever role they may play. And while we will incur some additional expenses, we know that this is a wise investment for employees to thrive and work in life. And I think that's a part of our conversation, you know, we've been talking about our students thriving and working life, but that's also our employees, and I appreciate you guys taking this step to continue to level up because our policy is more generous than most in the state. And I would say we have leveled up and set the standard for this region, so thank you for that.
Okay, so every year in June, the state sends us some recommended updates, and our team here at the central office reviews our policies and recommends some updates as well. So what I'm going to do is just go through the list and read the policy number, the name of the policy, who it was recommended by, and just a quick summary of changes. The green ones at the top you'll see are our two that we just spoke about, the parental leave and the bereavement leave. And then we have a couple that are included, the student activities, youth athletics, that have already been approved by the board, but that we're including in this annual update just to make sure that all the appropriate procedures are taken at KSBA. If there's any questions along the way, feel free to stop me. Okay. Policy number 03.1233, parental leave certified, recommended by HR. This is a new policy to replace the current maternity leave policy. 03.2233, parental leave classified, recommended by HR, new policy to replace the current maternity leave policy. 03.12324, bereavement leave certified, creation of a new policy allowing additional days off for bereavement leave. And I do want to point out that the certified and classified policies are the same, but the state does require a separation of those. Policy number 03.22324, bereavement leave classified, recommended by HR, creation of a new policy allowing additional days for bereavement leave. 01.421, public participation in open meetings, recommended by Nelson County Board. This policy is already approved, just including to ensure it is updated appropriately with KSBA. Policy number 09.3, student activities, recommended by central office, again, already approved. 09.435, youth athletics, recommended by central office, another one that's already approved, including to ensure updated with KSBA. 03.1232, sick leave certified, recommended by KSBA. They've made some updates to TRS reporting. 03.11, hiring certified, update to the link for the child abuse and neglect background check. A1.1, school resource officer, recommended by Nelson County Schools Police Department. Update to shift schedule. A1.5, secondary employment by Nelson County Schools Police Department. Creation of a new policy detailing secondary employment guidelines. A1.3, duties of the Officer General, Nelson County Schools Police Department. Update to uniform evidence collection and citations. PR 3.4, vehicle pursuits, Nelson County Schools Police Department. Update to align with the Kentucky League of Cities model policy. 09.2261, transportation services policy, recommended by transportation. Created the policy based off of KDE guidelines. 06.12, maintenance, recommended by transportation. Added language to match current practices in accordance with guidelines. 06.23, driver and substitute driver training, recommended by transportation. Updated language to reflect current practices. 06.342, hazards in and on the bus, recommended by transportation. Updated language about arrows and added language regarding anything that does not fit in the student's lap as prohibited. 06.343, food and other consumable items, recommended by transportation. Amended policy to allow water in a seethrough bottle. 06.32, eligibility for transportation, recommended by transportation. Removing the preschool transportation to align with current district practices. 06.34, conduct on bus by transportation, updates to reflect district code of conduct. 01.0, definitions, recommended by KSBA. Illegal change regarding types of acceptable signatures. 01.11, general powers and duties of the board by KSBA. Legal change per Senate Bill 207 and Senate Bill 120, revising the process to submit a waiver request and requirements to display prohibited occupations for minors. 01.111, district planning by KSBA. Legal change per House Bill 48, removing the requirements for a trauma-informed approach plan to be included in the district improvement plan. 01.5, school board policies. KSBA legal change per Senate Bill 207, revising the process to submit a waiver request. 02.31, school resource officers, KSBA. Legal change per Senate Bill 68, extending the timeframe for districts to have an SRO on each campus. 02.413 exemption by KSBA. Legal change per Senate Bill 207, revising the process to submit a waiver request. 02.421, election of school council members by KSBA. Legal change per Senate Bill 68, clarifying involuntary transfer during a teacher representative's SBDM term of office. 02.4241, school council policies, recommended by KSBA. Legal change per Senate Bill 207 and House Bill 190, revising the process... Legal change per Senate Bill 207 and House Bill 190, revising the process to submit a waiver request and amendments related to advanced coursework. 02.4242, school budget and purchasing by KSBA. Legal change per Senate Bill 207 regarding the purchase of instructional materials. 03.1161, coaches and assistant coaches and sponsors by KSBA. Legal change per 702-KAR 7065, clarifies that the cardiopulmonary resuscitation course provider must be approved by KHSA. 03.1721, conflict of interest by KSBA. Illegal change per Senate Bill 207 regarding the process for purchasing instructional materials. 03.175, retirement by KSBA. Legal change per Senate Bill 9, requiring districts to pay the actuarial cost of sick leave accrued beyond 12 days per year. 03.18 evaluations by KSBA. Illegal change per House Bill 48, increasing the time period between mandatory summit of evaluations for tenured staff. 03.19, professional development by KSBA. Legal change per House Bill 48, requiring districts to implement a four-year recurring professional development training schedule that includes required trainings for certified employees. 03.21, hiring classified by KSBA. Update to the link for the child abuse and neglect background check. 03.2141, non-teaching coaches and assistant coaches by KSBA. Illegal change per 702-KAR 7065, clarifies that the cardiopulmonary resuscitation course provider must be approved by KHSA. 03.2721, conflict of interest classified by KSBA. Legal change per Senate Bill 207 regarding purchasing instructional materials. 03.29, staff development classified by KSBA. Legal change per House Bill 48, removing requirements for active shooter training for classified staff. 03.4, substitute teachers by KSBA. Update to the link for the child abuse and neglect background check. 03.6, volunteers by KSBA. Update to the link for the child abuse and neglect background check. 04.1, budget planning and adoption by KSBA. Legal change per Senate Bill 68, amends KRS 424.250, requiring schools to post the budget on the district website. 04.32, model procurement code purchasing, KSBA. Update to the link for the child abuse and neglect background check. 04.8, disposal of school property by KSBA. Updated to reflect changes made to 702-KAR 4090. 07.1, food/school nutrition services by KSBA. Illegal change per Senate Bill 68, removing reporting requirements related to participation in nutrition programs. 08.1, curriculum by KSBA. Legal change per Senate Bill 68 and Senate Bill 207, revising the required learning capacities and academic achievement expectations of students and establishing an instructional materials depository. 08.1122, advanced coursework by KSBA. Illegal change per House Bill 190, defining advanced coursework offerings for students in grades four through 12, development of reporting requirements. 08.113, graduation requirements by KSBA. Illegal change per House Bill 342, 535, and 190, revising financial literacy requirements, civic literacy courses/exam, and advanced coursework. 08.1131, alternative credit options by KSBA. Illegal change to reflect the revisions to 704-KAR 3305, amending performance-based credit requirements. 08.11311, early graduation programs by KSBA. Legal change to reflect revisions to 704-KAR 3305, amending early graduation programs. 08.1312, home hospital instruction by KSBA. Illegal change per House Bill 132, detailing instruction for inpatient facilities shall be effective the day of admittance. 08.1351, pledge of allegiance by KSBA. Illegal change per Senate Bill 19, requiring local boards to establish a policy and procedure to include a moment of silence or reflection. 08.13531, human sexuality by KSBA. Illegal change per Senate Bill 181, to provide age-appropriate instruction on child sexual abuse through curriculum or programs. 08.22, promotion and retention, KSBA. Legal change per House Bill 240, requiring a student to remain in kindergarten for an additional year if they do not make adequate progress not to exceed the age of seven. 08.232, instructional materials by KSBA. Legal change per Senate Bill 207, changing the word "resources" to "materials." 08.232, instruct... no, just read that one. 08.2323, responsible use policy by KSBA. Illegal change per House Bill 208 and Senate Bill 181, defining school media, social media, as prohibited material to make inaccessible through school technology, and boards must designate one or more programs as a traceable communication system. 08.2324, traceable communications by KSBA. Illegal update creating a new policy per Senate Bill 181. Each board shall designate one or more programs or applications as a traceable communication system. You'll hear more about that in a moment from Ms. Case. 08.36, school calendar by KSBA. Illegal change per House Bill 684, establishing that schools are not required to close if school buildings are used as voting places. 09.122, attendance requirements by KSBA. Illegal change per Senate Bill 19, which amends KRS 158.200, revising the process for districts that permits moral instruction. 09.1222, non-resident students by KSBA. Legal change per House Bill 241 relating enrollment of non-resident students in virtual programs. 09.1224, online virtual and remote learning by KSBA. Legal change per House Bill 241, authorizes and establishes minimum requirements for the operation of full-time enrolled online and remote learning programs for grades K through 12. 09.22, student health and safety by KSBA. Legal change per House Bill 48, requiring districts to implement a four-year recurring professional development training schedule. 09.2211, employee reports of criminal activity by KSBA. Legal change per House Bill 5, updating reporting policies. 09.2241, student medication. Recommends over-the-counter medications not be administered in the school setting without both a medical practitioner's order and signed parental consent. 09.227, child abuse. Legal change per House Bill 48 regarding the display of designated hotline information and updates to required training. 09.313, eligibility athletics. Illegal change per Senate Bill 120, adding boys or coed lacrosse to sports excluded district standards for playing in grades seven and eight. 09.421, care of school and personal property. Legal change per House Bill 5, updating reporting requirements. 09.4221, sexual extortion. Senate Bill 73 creates a new policy which creates the crime of sexual extortion and adding requirements for school boards and personnel regarding notification. 09.4261, telecommunications devices. Legal change per House Bill 208 prohibiting students to use personal telecommunications during instructional time. 09.4294, driver's license revocation. Legal change per House Bill 15, amends policy to include individuals who are 15 years old. Okay, on to the procedures. We have two procedures included for our special education department. These were recommended to be included with the annual update by Ms. Teresa Combs. She's our special education attorney. These are policies that we currently have records of, changes of, but we are looking to get them included with the KSBA update moving forward. So, special education procedures recommended by Teresa Combs, the SPED attorney. Update to provide clarity and consistency in federal and state wording and provides updated timeframe for parent to receive copies of meeting summaries. 504 procedures recommended by Teresa Combs, SPED attorney. Update to clarify definitions of parent and surrogate parent. Provides evaluation timeline exemptions and clarifies seven-day notice required from 504 meeting with 24-hour notice exemption for safety concerns or disciplinary action. 062, AP 11 accidents, recommended by Transportation. Update to reporting procedures. 06.2, AP 12, use of communication devices on the bus by Transportation. Update to include new guidelines. 06.13, AP 1, fuel and equipment by Transportation. Update to include new fuel locations and reporting. 06.2, AP 2, bus evacuation drill report by Transportation. Remove archived form and added language regarding reporting. 06.21, AP 1, inclement weather plan by Transportation. Update to include use of district notification system, which is the one-call system. 06.31, AP 2, school bus schedule, recommended by Transportation. Eliminate this form to reflect current practices. 06.32, AP 1, eligibility for transportation. Remove preschool transportation to align with district practices. 06.34, AP 2, school bus incident report. Updated to remove old form and add language around proper form to use. 03.123, AP 2, leave request form and statement by KSBA. Legal change per Senate Bill 9 to include parental leave policy additions. 03.19, AP 1, professional development. Legal change per House Bill 48 requiring a report from EPSB identifying districts that do not implement an induction program for new teachers. Last page. 03.19, AP 23, district training requirements. Legal change per House Bill 48 requiring districts to implement a four-year recurring training schedule for certified employees. 04.8, AP 1, disposal of school property. Revisions to 702-KAR 4090, amend the disposition process for district property. 07.1, AP 1, school and community nutrition program. Legal change per Senate Bill 68 removing, bless you, the reporting requirements relating to participation in nutrition programs. 08.1131, AP 1, performance-based credit. Revisions to 704-KAR 3305, amend the performance-based and standards-based credit requirements. 08.1351, AP 1, notice of moment of silence or reflection. Senate Bill 19 requires local boards to establish policy and procedures stating there shall be a moment of silence during the school day. 08.2324, AP 2, consent for outline... for outside traceable communication. Senate Bill 181 permits parents to submit written consent for a designated school district employee or volunteer to communicate electronically with a student outside of the traceable communication system. 09.1224, AP 1, online virtual and remote learning. And this one just says instruction... or nope, did I do that? I did. That is a new procedure. I'm sorry, my eyes are crossed. A new procedure created per KSBA recommendations that just outlines the guidelines for online virtual and remote learning. 09.2241, AP 1, student medication guidelines. Recommends over-the-counter medications not be administered in the school setting without both medical practitioner's order and signed parental consent. Last but not least, 08.22, AP 2, acceleration/retention form. Amendments to 704-KAR 3095, revises response to intervention in multi-tiered systems of supports.
Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you. So, if there's no questions or discussion, we just need a motion to approve the policies for the first reading.
I just wanted to point out on 08.22, which is related to promotion and retention, the summary addresses that requiring the students remain in kindergarten for an additional year. And the full policy actually includes first grade, and that is per House Bill 240 that was passed this year, just so that if there's any question, that does include kindergarten and first grade. Because the summary says just kindergarten on the first page of the link. And then I did hear Ms. Case would be talking about the traceable communications. And when you do that, Ms. Trace... Ms. Case, would you also be able to speak to us a little bit about what the real change may look like in telecommunications policy since that has passed? The legislature and implications, is that a place you could do that later?
And that's really just the implementation of no cellphone policy, Melissa.
Okay, I think, because I think those are important points that we need to bring out for clarification for our community. So, thank you. And I would... anybody else?
Yeah, any other discussion? All right, we'll need a motion to approve the first reading of the annual policy and procedure updates.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. I need a second?
I'll second.
All right, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thanks again, Kristin. All right. Up next, we have Dr. Sheerhorn to talk about grant applications.
So, this month, we would like to apply for the COPS grant, also known as SVPP. We've had this grant in the past, I think it was in 2020. It primarily focuses on physical safety of schools. So with this, we are proposing to purchase door locks, additional security cameras. I think that captures it. It will be... the grant period will be October 1st, 2025, through Octo... or through September 30th of 2028. So it is a three-year grant period. And we will be requesting about $400,000.
Is this a state or a federal grant?
It's a federal grant.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, if there's no discussion, we need a motion to approve the grant application as presented.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Yolanda. I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
I have a ready one.
And we need a second.
I'll second it.
All right, thanks, guys. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Sheer.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we're going to talk about that SB 181 and student communication, how that's going to change across the district.
Yes, so if you're not familiar with SB 181, that is a requirement for a traceable communication system for our district, for all districts across the state, and really an ask that we identify one that we will use here. And so that system has to be approved by you guys this evening. I've been in contact with a few. Jesse has been super supportive in helping identify and talking to his technology groups across the state. And really, Parent Square is where we've landed right now. It not only allows us to trace the communication, it allows the parents to see exactly what that communication is between the student and whoever is messaging them, whether it's their coach or their teacher. But it also allows us to have a system for communication district-wide. So when you're thinking about team reach and remind and all of the different ways that parents are being connected with now, it will be really a one-stop shop, like as we get into... Like, as we get into this, we can even send out messaging for like school cancellations and field trips. And so it's a pretty impressive system. But it, so it does the thing that it requires us to do, but allows us to do so much more. And then I reached out to Kentucky Center for Safe Schools to have this approved as something we could spend that Safe Schools money on, and he is allowing us to do that. So we can purchase the system with the Safe Schools money as it is a safety issue.
And this is going to be for, whether it's a coach or teacher?
A coach, a volunteer, a teacher, who ever needs to communicate with a student. Would do so through this system.
Directly with a student.
Directly with students, yes.
I'm probably reiterating, but my understanding is, for people who may not know what we mean by traceable communication, the new law says that no school employee or coach, et cetera, can directly communicate with a student by any system except this one that is approved by the district. And it has to be something that anyone can go in and like, can be monitored to make sure. So it means no more use of social media. No Facebook, no TikTok, no private messages.
Right, directly with students.
Students, okay. And what about like Dojo? Will those systems be phased out too, or?
So, this also has a reward system built into it that's supposed to launch right before school starts. They are in beta, I think they called it. And so they're actively using it now and working out the kinks, and they say that will launch before school starts, so.
We still can use other tools for families.
So to communicate with.
So Dojo will still exist.
But is there an option that this could be? Because, I mean, I was looking at the features. This thing is incredible. If it really holds true to everything that they are selling.
So, I've already had all of the elementary principals meet with Parent Square, all of the middle and all of the high. And like, everybody is on board if it does what we say it's going to do. And then Jesse has worked with one of the gentlemen who actually writes code, I think, for IC, who was a CIO in a district local to us. So knows him well, is confident in his abilities for this sync to happen. But I think even as I met with the elementary group, they're excited for this one communication as well. Like, we wouldn't need Dojo, per se.
We, you know, we face challenges. We have our grandchildren, and there are five different apps we're operating out of to try to keep up with the messaging and then still trying to check Facebook, et cetera. So if this works as a one-stop shop, I think that it would be very beneficial for families.
Yes.
Instead of having to have multiple apps and trying to.
Permission slips, surveys, like.
Which do I check which day and for which kid? And did I run the full cycle every day?
You create a calendar, there's a calendar. You can open the calendar. It can be for all of your kids, it can be for one of your kids, and it shows you the dates of the events and the times. And if you sign up for something, it gives you a reminder how you signed up to. It looks pretty dag on legit. So fingers crossed real hard that it does everything that it says it will do. We just don't have the opportunity to pilot because it's ineffective.
There's also very few devices that were approved to meet the.
Right, and some of them are like, we can do it now, but they've been doing it for like five minutes. Whereas this company, they've been doing this since 2012.
Well, kudos to our district for stepping up and doing more than just making a traceable system and trying to find something that is also more efficient and effective.
Hopefully it does all the things. I think if it does everything it says, I think it's going to be awesome for us and for families.
Absolutely. Yeah, I know we're doing this for safety, but if it does all that and safety?
Yeah.
So, one thing we want to follow up on probably in July is the process for families to opt out. So families can still choose for someone to communicate directly with their child. We don't expect that to be the norm, but we do expect it to occur. Just our system for that, it needs to be traceable as well and easily accessed through Google Forms, et cetera. So something that we just want to follow up on.
You can see right in the system, if they opt out, it says opted out.
Oh, awesome.
I've seen on social media where, not our district yet, but other districts have been making posts reminding staff that they've got to disconnect, you know, or staff members making posts that they're going to be disconnecting from students.
Right.
And so is that a norm, an expectation with this?
I think we do have to commit, June 27th is the day that it's in effect. So we will have to communicate to staff to make sure that it's past that date. But we also have, actually, thank you, Laura, yeah. FFA is going to camp, I think. And so because this system will not be in effect yet, and it's during the same timeframe, we have permissions in the interim that identifies very specific events for a very specific amount of time that students and their leaders would be able to have that communication just during this transition.
Is there a way with, you know, with this program especially, and just thinking future changes, is there a way we can have like an onboarding conversation with like our back-to-school BASH? You know, ways that we can set parents in a room and say, hey, listen, this is your new form of communication with your student.
I'm hoping Community Table, maybe? Because it's super easy, they just zap a QR code and.
But just sharing some of the, especially if we can share with them all of the things that it can do.
Yeah, we should make a video.
Exactly.
I'd say it's going to take more than a video.
Maybe that'll get us started.
I don't know.
It's going to take an ongoing process, week to week, we know that.
It's a start.
It's super intuitive, like.
To be honest, all, every district in the state is kind of making this decision right now because just got asked. So with that in mind, it is useful that it's June 10th if we've made the decision, because some districts have not. It allows us to build something into the process that is going to build integrity, so.
If you say, yes, I have the onboarding form filled out, I just have to hit submit, and they say they can get us going in a couple weeks, so.
So with that, any further discussion?
So I was just going to say, we, this is a separate issue, but the telecommunication device law also goes into effect, which is, you want to talk a little bit about that, where we are with implementation of cellphones in classrooms?
So I feel like across the district, we are already, we already have the precedent set that cellphones are not used. You put them away once you cross the threshold. So that won't be new for our students. A thing that I saw, that I see in that bill that is new language is that students cannot access social media in those classroom space unless they're given specific permission, and it's for an instructional purpose. So the access to social media will be new for them. But across 612, students are not supposed to, actually, 6 through 8 aren't supposed to have their phones on them at all. They're supposed to be in their backpacks during the day or in their lockers. And then 912, they have that threshold expectation with specific permission to use their phones already. So it won't be a big shift.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, with that, we need a motion to approve the Parent Square as the NCS traceable communication system. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Let that go on. All right, so moving on, we are going to hear about the hearing officer's report from the hearing last night.
So, in short, the hearing officer's report is a summary of public input from the district's hearing on the DFP. This hearing allows the local Board of Education to review public comments before finalizing the plan and submitting it to KDE. Essentially, the board votes to accept or reject the report. As you know, James Nyhoff was the hearing officer. The hearing officer's report really is a detailed summary of all commentary and direction provided during that time. This is one of the last steps for the board to take as they finalize the facility plan, allowing it to be submitted to the Kentucky Department of Education for final review. So we have shared that hearing officer's report. And again, it's a very detailed overview of what occurred last night. This would be submitted as a part of the package to the Kentucky Department of Education. Provides a summary, detailed summary and overview of written testimony along with each person that spoke, their names, along with a general summary of what they spoke about. There were in total, according to this, 29 speakers. And this provides, again, a very detailed overview of that messaging. We also have a video live online where you can see all commentary that led to this hearing officer's report.
Mr. Nyhoff did an amazing job and read, got through every guest comment that was sent via email. I don't think he was cut off at all. I think he got within that three-minute mark, so it was nice to hear everyone's. Now, the actual email, does that get sent with that report?
Yeah, it'll be scanned in as a part of it.
I just want to make sure.
Along with the audio recording.
Yes. So with that, is there any discussion on the hearing report from last evening? If not, we need a motion to accept the hearing officer's report and finalize the district facilities plan, allowing it to be submitted to the Kentucky Department of Education for final review.
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you. Anyone need a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Before we move on to the next thing, I just want to take a second. It's not really discussing the hearing report itself, but it's sort of giving some space for the board to really begin looking at the priorities on that district facility plan. We come back in roughly 30 days in, that will be July.
July 22nd is the current next scheduled meeting. The board, in theory, could call a special call meeting if they chose or scheduled additional work session. We're not.
Anticipating that, but we're, you know, at this point, what this allows is the board has just approved this to go back to KDE for final approval. What that means is everything from there on is in our hands. And it will be up to the board to take, and I want to shout out a little bit and kind of shift a little at the same time so you understand where I'm headed. The local planning committee put everything on our district facility plan as Phase 1, basically. So everything is front-loaded so that the board has discretion to make decisions on each of those projects. That is the board's decision moving forward. So in July, I would like for the board to be ready to start making those decisions, to prioritize the needs of that district facility plan and be prepared to start having those conversations in July.
I think we, across our community, from a number of individuals and also within this board, that we recognize there's a high need at New Haven and some of those schools, and that there's been a prior discussion of that in the prior facility plan. Also, of course, we know with Nelson County High School, the portions of that building are, I believe, 55 years old. And so those are some obvious needs. One of the things that I think that I need at that July meeting is I would like to see something that provides us information about what had been done previously. Because we're looking at some of these projects being similar, possibly. But I know that there are phases where significant payments were made to architects for architectural designs. And I am interested as a board member in looking at those things and knowing what has already been expended that could be not repeated. Because I do not want to incur any additional cost for work that may have already been done. And I'd like a report on our different facilities and where they are in relation to phases such as architects. Any bidding that has already happened? Can we reuse some of those bids and ask those contractors if they'll honor the bids at those prices? Also, if it's allowable and it's legal within the legal framework to still retain those bids, that is due diligence, I think, as a board member to, for people who were the low bids, to consider exploring that. And then also, you know, where, I assume we had, we've had some that have moved in construction. So for example, the ATC. But again, could we have an update on each facility that would be addressed and where they are in those phases? And is there opportunity to, you know, where are we? Because that sets the pace, too, because some things take time.
Well, because there's design phase, there's bidding phase. So everything is sort of laid out to regulation of what we have to follow. But I think that's a great start and definitely something that will be helpful as we're looking at the priorities and setting those priorities next month.
And Mr. Bradley, is that, I'd like to see that prepared on a slide, please.
Yeah.
And be shared for the public.
Mr. Martin and I could definitely work on. Makes sense, there's a lot of data that we even need to reclaim as we move to the future. Some of these projects have been sitting for anywhere from 12 to 24 months. So just allows us to re-establish where we were with the architects, make sure they're on the same page as well.
Thank you for that, Dr. Lee. All right, so next thing, we're talking about rank change programs, which we have been talking about throughout this school year.
So in January, the board made a significant investment in professional learning and continuing to advance high-performance professionals across Nelson County schools. Again, similar to the work you did with policy just earlier around maternity leave, I would say as a district, we are ahead of other districts in the region in leveling up for rank change programs. We've been doing the primary, the majority of our work with the Green River Educational Cooperative, along with the Central Kentucky Educational Cooperative. We also did some work with the Western Kentucky Cooperative, one or two people, as well as Bloom Board. We're no longer currently working with Bloom Board as much as we are the co-ops. As we look towards the future, and this is, I'm not going to go into great detail about this, but as we look at our work that we've been doing across our system, a big focus has continued to be on foundational academic skills. We saw that as we committed to literacy and math through GREC in January. So we have 27 teachers enrolled in advanced literacy and math programming in GREC. I believe five to six of those teachers have completed that program. 20 to 21 are still in the program advancing that work. We also, you've seen just in our work at the UP Center, a big commitment to the way we're thinking about advancing college and career credentialing, jobs and professional networks. We're also advancing the work across our system for enduring life skills. An area that we see the future demanding greater investment from our schools is overall health and well-being. And we've worked to connect our nursing team, our café team, and our physical education team, along with our mental health team, in a conversation about the future of well-being that gives students a greater sense of identity around what we're calling mind-body health. And being able to thrive and work in life is not just having the skills, but also understanding the emotional nature of success. And if we look at, you know, sometime in 2005, this idea of emotional intelligence emerged from a guy that wrote a book about, oh, EQ is more important than IQ. Whether that's true or not, that's what the guy wrote about. With that said, as we look right now, the AI movement is upon us. You know, we also know these things here, they're not as cool as they used to be, right? It's people are like, no cellphones in, you know, schools, what do you know? Well, I think we know what's going to happen next. They're going to say, health and well-being, that's important. And AI and the work that's going on around that right now with artificial intelligence, we have 20 teachers invested in that work that are really pioneering the conversation. What we have not, and what public education has largely neglected, is the work we do with physical education and health because it's not tested. Plain and simple. With that in mind, as we look at our work as a school district, we know that not only does the future demand it and we're predicting out, you know, just like we predicted Chick-fil-A, we predicted out that the, by 2030, it's going to be cool to have health and well-being in schools. And I don't say that mockingly, I'm just, I'm saying that matter of fact. And we also know that it's the right thing to do for kids. Even more important, just like we didn't wait to do work-based learning until we got rewarded, we don't want to wait to advance our work with health and well-being. So this is a bit of a rant, didn't mean to go on this far of a rant, but I share that to say, we have a team right now, it's called the Thrive 360 Team. And they've been connecting as a starter conversation over the last three months, nursing, mental health, café, to start a better conversation around mind-body health related to mental health, physical health, food, et cetera. So we have about six to seven PE teachers that are, want to advance this work further with the Green River Educational Cooperative. And that's one asked tonight, is that we begin to advance that group. And that's one asked tonight, is that we begin to advance that group. We have a really excited group of physical education teachers that are interested in leveling up professionally and advancing common assessments, advancing their work around the way they collaborate and measure mind-body health, and also connecting that to the work that Melissa Case and Ms. Arnold are doing with Care and Connect classes. So that's the first part of it. We're looking at about six teachers that are, we believe, and then preschool teachers are a big part of the growth of our district. We have some remarkable preschool teachers that have continued to stabilize in our schools. And our work going on in the preschool over the last few years has been really impressive. And at the same time, those teachers are looking for a vehicle to level up. And the Green River Educational Cooperative is looking to partner with us with a specialized cohort of preschool teachers focusing on a new model for what is called the pyramid model, and specifically a focus on advancing reading and math skills in preschool.
So as we talk about leveling up, that is our local terminology for the rank change program through Green River. That it's an approved state program for teachers to a change of rank change.
That's right.
And so they have a core program and a structure that they follow, and then you can specialize in content, correct? And so we, we currently had, the initial cohorts we approved, was it January? Was it Nelson County High School?
January.
January.
Okay, in January. There was some discussion around that. And so we had our initial cohort of teachers who were participating. And I think, there we go. There are numbers. Are we having good retention and completion?
We're having great retention. I'd, I'd say most of these have just started, so CKC is a year out from that program, from even anyone having a chance to complete. And I think GREC is a year out from about 20 of those team members. Bloom Board, you can see six out of 11 have completed the program. We're looking at five more to complete this year. This commitment to CKC would be about a $25,000 commitment annually for the next two years. Again, it's an advancement. We also, it looks like right now, if we, and we can revisit this in July, we have about 10 additional teachers that are emerging in our literacy and numeracy process that we may be evaluating in July. That would add, that would add to that 27. I think there's a couple layers to this. We have to acknowledge, this is a major investment in, in professional growth. It's also a major investment in compensation. At the end of each of these programs, each team member would receive at least, at least currently based on salaries, $5,000-ish in increased compensation for that year, depending on the number of days that they work. So long-term, we can say that this is an additional. If you take $5,000 times the number up there, you're looking at about $300,000 to $350,000 annually once they're completed in salary and compensation. Won't work out perfectly, but that's a general roundabout way to say, that's also equivalent to about 1% salary increase across the district, just as a, as a measure of budgeting. So I share that as a larger conversation to understand, this is an investment in people. It's also, we know that it's an investment in learning and the priorities of the district.
If you would go back to the prior slide, something that we discussed in January and that I see with this is these align to identified needs within the district. It's, because we are paying for it as a district, it is for targeted areas in which we're trying to increase the skills of our educators, correct? With direct academic implications. It's not just somebody decides to go get a rank change.
Literacy and math and the kindergarten readiness piece, 100%, I think the health conversation is just emerging. We've had a big focus on mental health, but we've not had a proactive focus on health and well-being in the context of Care and Connect. I share that to say, the PE team, being a part of this conversation, is, is crucial to taking that seriously.
This is a, considered from a research perspective, a very meaningful model of job embedded professional learning. And it used to be when you, as an educator, went to get your master's or your rank, you just picked something. And sometimes people did it just for the, the financial benefit. Something I greatly value about this is that it puts the people together, working together, and they are going through and doing action learning plans and doing the work and strengthening their skills through a series of professional learning. It has, you know, content experts coming in and guiding that. So it's very meaningful to truly improve their skills and increase what they're doing in their classrooms. And it creates good school leaders, too, I think that, that are going to branch out with colleagues who were not part of these activities.
Well, and my guess is if you ask Ms. Holderman over there, she would highly support anything that is looking at the whole student. Everything that, with, where it says mind-body health, those are essential to having a student that feels connected, they feel good, they feel like they are part of something. And I, again, I can't imagine you would look at this and go, wah! This is a really good thing. And like Dr. Lee said, if we can really engage every educator to improve how they're going to interact with students, it's a win.
Any other questions about this? We know it is an investment. We know it's, you know, it begs the question, you know, what next? I do think, we're still studying the numbers, but we see about 10 additional literacy and math GREC participants. We have not finalized that, but that could be something we come back to you in July or August.
I think with anything that we've talked to, I talked about this before, is these are very fluid conversations. These are going to consistently change the programs themselves. As Dr. Lee said, when we see needs in the district of how we need to improve, whether it's academic or mind and body, those are going to adapt as we look through these, these targeted approaches to these programs. So any additional discussion? So at this moment, we would need a recommended motion to approve funding for the teacher/CEO programs for up to 10 teachers in both preschool education and physical education programs at the Green River Regional Educational Cooperative for the '25-'26 school year.
I'll make, I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, thank you guys for supporting, continuing to support the people in this district. I think that this is where we shine, when we continue to support the people in our district. It's a big win. All right, so moving on, are we at the calendar point? Any, I don't foresee any changes. As the superintendent said, we could have some changes in the calendar, but I don't anticipate it. I have been thinking about whether we would need to add a working session, but I'm not sure where that's going to be. So that's one thing that may change either July, early August. But again, I know that's the time of school year. Everybody's sort of getting back. It's a lot of moving parts. We just have a short window when we have a break. So it feels like we sort of have a really busy end of the year and then a really busy beginning of the school year, so.
Summer moves quickly.
Yes, it does. So sort of moving on to celebrations, if there's no conversation around calendar. And this is sort of, this is my perspective as a parent. As a parent, I was invited to be part of one of the programs that the teachers and, well, mainly principals and counselors from the middle and the high schools and some additional staff. And really looking at how students are preparing and how the district is best supporting that preparation for students. And it was such, I just want to talk a little bit about, people believe that the people leave these buildings at the end, the last day of school or maybe two days after school ends, and we don't see them again until August, and it's time for them to set up their classrooms. These people are working. They are trying to not just improve what they're doing for students, they're trying to improve how they are going to work with students. And this whole conversation around how do we best prepare our kids is really, I think, Barryman said it best, it's a looking at sixth through 12. How do we get our sixth graders, our seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th graders, how do we get them prepared for the next step? As a parent, I've had the thing come home with my kid from high school. Okay, what grade, what do I need to take next year? I am not versed in that conversation. I'm like, I don't know, what do you want to take? And I have never been able to prepare my kid to really engage in that conversation. And what the district is doing and looking at now, and, and this is a district-wide conversation. That's something I just kept bringing up. This is a partnership between the students, the parents, the counselors, the principals, the math teachers, the English teachers, the Care and Connect leaders. This is something that we all need to be part of. And it starts early. You know, there are microschools going on, but how many of our parents are hearing about the microschools? How many kids know that when they go from one microschool that, that's talking about, you know, the fusion microschool that's going to be coming into the school year, you know, math and science? Where do they go when they leave seventh and eighth grade from that fusion class? What do we need to be talking about what their freshman year looks like? What do we get to talk to them about what their sophomore year looks like? Let's start looking ahead as these kids get through these programs. And really, just any kid, no matter what program they're going into. So I think Ms. Case and Ms. Arnold are leading that conversation. And I just have to celebrate the people that were here that day. I was excited. My son, who never talks, was excited because he got to share a little bit about how he's felt as a sophomore going into his junior year. And it really, you know, I'm unaware of a lot of the things that he's doing. Again, I am an involved parent, but that doesn't mean I'm an educated parent on what he needs to do next. And I think this is really going to open up an additional conversation across the district and how we can better prepare our students and our families for the next steps, whether it's going into one grade to another or actually going on after they graduate. And I would really like to hear more. If there's, like I said, if we're going to talk about a working session, I think that's something that we could look at for July or August, that where we're really looking at that program more. Not really program, but the work that's being involved in that. And I noticed a lot of the stuff that we talked about are on the walls.
So it's college and career advising?
Yes.
Power-up coaching.
And it was just, it was a powerful day for us, or morning. But yes, if there's a way that we can look into that, I would like to hear more about that and see where we are.
I attended the microschool launch on May 27th at Foster Heights, and it was so very well-attended. Did we have maybe 75 or so people? It was very full with our community partners. And even KDE came down to be part of the conversation and to see what Nelson County is doing in that vein, and also our leaders in those programs. And to hear our elementary students who are participating in the microschools at Foster Heights talking about what they have learned and how they are using that information was powerful. And I appreciate that our students have opportunities to explore interests and passions and determine if something is something they want to do or, or not. And I would, I've been looking forward to seeing those programs expand and more and more students have opportunities. And I had a conversation with a parent yesterday, and he was talking about that and how he could not wait for his children to have those opportunities and wish there were more of them. Because his, had one who had not had an opportunity to do that yet. And kudos to the classroom leaders for making it such a strong program. We also had a shout-out last week at the, in the Legislative Interim Joint Committee on Education for our apprenticeship program. And good job, good job that on our first completer. It's May.
Yes.
First in the state.
All right, any further celebrations or discussions? All right, so we are moving on to an executive session per KRS 156.5576C. The board evaluates the superintendent annually on Kentucky Superintendent Standards, and we are going to be going into closed session to discuss. So I will need, we don't need a motion to do that?
We do.
Okay.
Convene exec.
All right, I need a second? All right, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
All right.
We're good, Jessie?
All right, we need a motion to return to open session following executive session.
Motion.
All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes. All right, so with that, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Thanks. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. We're at the...
We're good, Jessie?
All right, we need a motion to return to open session following executive session.
Motion.
All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes. All right, so with that, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Thanks. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, motion passes. We're at the...
We're good, Jessie?
All right, we need a motion to return to open session following executive session.
Motion.
All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So, per our discussion in closed session, it was a discussion of mid-year priorities for the superintendent evaluation, and the board has looked at establishing standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for the 25, 26 school year. If there's no further discussion, I need a motion to establish standards two, four, and seven as priorities for evaluation of the superintendent for 25, 26 school year. All right, they need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes. All right, so with that, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Thanks. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.